Praise God. At our church, we have this confidence in Christ. Whatever happens, whatever the situation is, there is this God who sits on His throne. You are not a God created by human hands. You are not a God dependent on any mortal man. You are not a God in need of anything we can give by your plan. That's just the way it is. Come on church, sing with me. Sing this. You are not a God created by human hands. You are not a God dependent on any mortal man. You are not a God in need of anything we can give by your plan. That's just the way it is. Sing this. You are God alone from before time began. You are God alone. You are God alone. And you right now, giving good times and bad. You are God alone. You are God alone. You're the only God whose power none can contend. You're the only God whose saving and praise will never end. You're the only God whose worthy of everything we can give. You are God. That's just the way it is. You are God alone from before time began. You are God alone. You are God alone. And you right now, giving good times and bad. You are God alone. You are God alone. That's what you are. Come on, let's all clear this. That's what you are. Come on. You are God alone from before time began. You are God alone. You are God alone. And you right now, giving good times and bad. You are God alone. You are God alone. Sing this, come on. Unchangeable, unstoppable. That's what you are. All glory, all praise, and honor unto our God who sits on the throne, and to the land. It's all praise God. All of God's people will say, "Amen, amen."
To be eligible for certificate, you must have at least 80% attendance. For those who can attend 80%, raffles and awards await you. And for those who missed sessions and 80% attendance, can still catch the recorded video. It is available in FB page, but no more certificate. Quiz will be given at the start of every session through Google form link in the Zoom chat box. So you should have an advanced reading for every session topic. Here, the Coles topics are combined study with our mega D group topics, SpiritualBooth.com. So this time, to introduce our speaker, may I call our D group leader, at the same time the GLC coordinator, Kuya Robert Wong.
Hey, thank you po, Ati Linda and Kuya Roy. Good evening to all of you. It is my honor to introduce to you God's messenger for tonight. He is a loving husband to Ati Pita, unintentional father to Anton, Samuel, and Manu. He was formerly the satellite pastor of CCF Antipolo until God calls him for a higher responsibility. He is currently the overseeing three satellites under CCF Metrix. Have two, namely CCF Caenta, CCF Antipolo, and CCF Lower Antipolo. He is also an advocate of the Word Needs a Father program that teaches all fathers and mothers too on how to be intentional models to their children. Friends, let's all prepare our hearts and minds as we listen to God's message to be delivered to us by His faithful servant Pastor Mark Villarreal.
Hello, good evening everyone. Good evening. Good evening to...
Good evening Pastor.
Good evening.
Good evening po.
Good evening po. Wow, thank... Everyone is greeting. Good evening to at least 190 of us. When I say at least, because that's, I think, 100, at least 190 screens, but we can be more than 200. You know, I'm so happy and excited that a lot of you would like to study the Bible, a lot of you would like to attend Miracles, and a lot of you would like to study the Book of Romans. You know, indeed, as Doc Jun mentioned last week, talagang napakaganda nitong bukna ito. Very foundational, highly doctrinal book, highly suggested that every Christian should really study the Book of Romans. So I know that most of you are doing well. If there are those who are struggling right now, health-wise, perhaps even financial-wise, our prayers are with you. And again, we hope to see you soon again, Lord willing. You know, Lord willing, if everything turns out already better. So let's dive into our topic. Let's dive into our topic. Last week, we studied the first section of chapter one. So ngayon, pag-uusapan natin is the second section of chapter one. And the title of this study is "God's Righteousness Requires God's Wrath." "God's Righteousness Requires God's Wrath." When you think about the word wrath, pag iniisip mo 'yung word wrath, diba? Ano pumapasok sa isip mo? You know, what comes to your mind? Sa Tagalog, ano ba ang wrath? Ano ba ang wrath sa Tagalog? I mean, you can chat in the chat box if you want to answer. I'll show you because, you know, I think ako lang dapat ang nagasalita this time para hindi mainga 'yung odyo. When you think about the word wrath, okay, galit, siyempre, Tagalog, galit. Piloso po talaga, sabi ni Doc Jun, ano? Ma-mouse ba? Mouse, o ano? So, even di wrath, ah, wrath, okay, W-A-T-H, okay, galit. Grabe ito si Mam Sylvia, mas hinhing, galit. Okay, ito naman si Paolo. Paolo, nagpuyos, naggalit, grabe ah. Hindi ko alam 'yung mga Tagalog na 'yan, ah, puot. Okay, puot ang Diyos. You know, the truth is, hindi po natin gusto 'yung salitang wrath. Sapagkat 'yun nga ay tungkol sa galit, diba? It is a terrifying and alarming word, but it is in the Book of Romans, it is in the Bible. According to United Nations Children's Fund, in 2016, sabi nila, grabe ito, 8 out of 10 children suffer from some form of violence at any time of their life. 8 out of 10, grabe, that's 80%. It is said, violence from their parents, violence from perhaps their teachers, their boss, the community. 8 out of 10 suffer from some form of violence. Now, maybe you are part of this statistic. Maybe you were growing up and you grew up under very... 'Yung parents niyo, mainita ng ulo, very impatient. And worse, perhaps you grew up under parents who abused you physically, verbally. And you have experienced wrath, for some of you, perhaps, sa mga boss niyo. When I was in preschool, I remember very clearly in my mind, because when you are in preschool, you don't... First time mo to be in a very strange environment, diba? Pag preschool ka, so medyo traumatic. But I remember I had a very, very teacher who was very impatient. You know, as a preschooler, I don't know why she got angry at me, but it was very vivid in my memory. When I was in preschool, the teacher got angry at me and she physically, basically hurt me. What she did was, out of her anger, 'yung... She got something, I think it was a bug. Basically, preschool to ah, she threw it not at me, but at my hand. And it was so hard na 'yung daliri ko nagdugo. Preschool ako rin, dumugo. So, la ako sa clinic and apparently they treated me and I fell asleep. And when I woke up, the teacher was, you know, caressing me, saying sorry, apologizing. I was in preschool. Totoo lang, hindi ko na-report 'yung pangyayari na 'yun. But I was so terrified that the teacher... You know, growing up, one of my first jobs, I was in sales and I did some mistakes in my job performance. And I remember very vividly, my... The general manager of the company was so angry at me. He called me to his office, he shouted at me, said a lot of bad things to me. And he... Kinuha po niya stapler. Stapler ah? Hawak-hawak niya, akala ko ibabato sa akin eh. See, medyo naghahanda na ako, umilad. But what I'm saying is, you know, all of us have experienced some form of wrath from others. We are recipients. And therefore, this has affected our perception sa wrath. So, pag-uusapan natin 'yun, tama po 'yun, 'yung tao nagagalit, diba? Na-experience natin 'yun, pero ang Diyos nagagalit, tama ba 'yun? And a lot of people, nahihirapan 'yung kollektyon, 'yung wrath at saka ang Diyos. The anger and God, but that is taught in the Bible. And therefore, we need to talk about this. Some Christians, they don't want to talk about it. In fact, some people, they use this doctrine in the Bible to accuse God of being a very vengeful and being wrathful God. And therefore, they use this as their argument not to believe in God or not to worship God. But we need to have a proper understanding about the wrath of God. But before that, ma-quick review po na tayo. Quick review tayo. Remember, Doc Jun last week taught us the three purpose, the three main purpose why Paul wrote the Book of Romans. Number one is to clarify the gospel, right? Sabi ng Romans chapter 1 verse 16, "I am not ashamed of the gospel. It is the power of God for salvation to everyone who believes." So the gospel is the power of God. Therefore, central to our faith is the gospel. The moment you deny the gospel, you deny God. You know, that is very important, because some Christians, they focus on other things. Some Christians today, they focus social justice. They focus on helping the poor and the needy. They focus in fighting for causes and fighting for rights, drug abuse, et cetera, et cetera. Nothing wrong with that. It's good to be part of those noble causes, but we must never neglect the fundamental, primary purpose why God called us, and that is the gospel. Kaya nga sabi ni Paul sa 1 Corinthians 15, diba? It is of primary importance. The gospel is of primary importance. In other words, it is the most important of all. If we neglect the gospel, we neglect the power. That there is power in the gospel. Second purpose is to unify the church, diba? To the Jew first and also to the Greek. Doc Jun mentioned that according to history, there were some tensions between the Jews and the Greek Christians. And that's why one of the purposes of Paul is to unify the church. And then thirdly is to reveal God's righteousness. That is where we... It is where it is connected to our topic tonight in verse 17, chapter 1 verse 17. It says, "For in it the righteousness of God is revealed from faith to faith. As it is written, 'The righteous man shall live by faith.'" The word righteous means, you know, to meet a standard, to meet a standard or the state of being right, to meet a standard. So the righteousness of God is very important. It is taught widely in the Book of Romans. And the righteousness of God means that God is, of course, righteous. He is also a judge, a judge. Ano ba ginagawa ng judge? Ang judge, nag-judge siya between right and wrong. If you did wrong, if you violated the law, you will be punished. And if you are innocent, you will be safe. That is the role of the judge. So the righteousness of God means God reveals His righteousness. In other words, He reveals His integrity. His character is to punish evil doers. So the righteousness of God demands punishment. And we all know that, diba? For those of us who have been wrong, who have suffered injustice, diba? Maraming tao sa atin, inosyente tayo, pero we were accused. Talibawa, and for those people, 'yung kanilang kamag-anak na rape, 'yung kanilang kamag-anak, talibawa, kapatid mo, pinatay. And inosyente 'yung kapatid mo, you long for justice. That is part of the character of God that is passed on to us. So God reveals His righteousness in terms of the idea of to punish evil doers. But also, God reveals His righteousness kasi nangako siya. He made a promise. Ano 'yung pangako ng Panginoon? He made a promise to Abraham that through his seed, sa mga... Through his descendants, the earth will be blessed. Through Israel, He will save His people. So the righteousness of God also demands that He will fulfill His promise, and we see that in the gospel. At pag-uusapan natin 'yun, so 'yun 'yung dalawang aspeto ng righteousness. So ito ang pag-uusapan natin, the wrath of God. We're gonna look at the text, the second section of chapter one, verse 18 to 32. Sabi dito, "For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and unrighteousness for men who suppress the truth in unrighteousness." Grabe, ano? Pakatapos, sabi ni Paul, the righteousness of God, diba? Sabi niya, the power of the gospel is for salvation. And then sabi niya, parang talagang nagdumiko eh. Verse 18, "He turns dark," you know? Sabi, the wrath of God. So again, how do you reconcile God and wrath? Diba? This is very widely thought in the Bible. This is an alarming and terrifying phrase. And this, again, as I mentioned, a major reason why many people are turned off by the Bible, particularly the Old Testament, because they see the wrath of God. But remember this, the wrath of God is towards sinners, towards sin and towards sinners. You know, one scholar puts it this way, baka ma-shock kayo. Itong sinabi isang scholar, one scholar puts it this way, "Because he is God, because he is characteristically holy, God cannot tolerate sin." And the wrath of God, look at this, is his annihilating reaction against sin. Minsan, diba po, pagbinaba sa'yo, parang grabe. Kaya nga sabi ng scholar, pero sinuhan ang scholar afterwards. That is hard for us to grasp and to accept. Even the great reformer Martin Luther found it hard. He struggled with that idea. He spoke of God's love as God's own work and he spoke of his wrath as God's strange work. It is a baffling concept for a Christians to grasp. So a lot of people or Christians throughout history struggled with the wrath. Now, there are some things you need to understand about God's wrath. Ito, makinig po ko, 'yung importante ito. Number one, the anger of God is not like our anger. The reason why not to turn off tayo with the idea of the wrath of God is because of this, because of our personal experience. Sabi ko kanina, before many of us, we were at the end of physical abuse, verbal abuse. Ang tao, kung magalit, ang bilis, diba? Talibawa, ako, baka nagda-drive ka and then may kumat sa'yo ang motorsiklo, nagagalit ka kaagad. Diba? Pag may taong disrespect sa'yo, nagagalit ka. Pag may taong nagmura sa'yo, nagagalit ka. In fact, you know what this afternoon? May nagmura po sa'kin, totoo lang ah. Hindi ko lang sabihin kung paano ako nagrespond. But meron po nagmura sa'kin. I almost experienced the wrath of man, diba? Not the wrath of God. But the point is, ang tao, mabilis magalit. Ang Diyos, hindi mabilis magalit. And that's the reason why we're turned off by the idea of the wrath of God is because we compare it to our experience. We project our experience as a child being abused as wrath, the wrath of God, and that is not the case. Notice the phrase. The phrase wrath of God is often mentioned by Paul. Paul speaks about the wrath of God, but this is the risk. But Paul never speaks of God being angry. So the wrath of God is something that is true, because God is righteous. But that doesn't mean that God is angry at you personally. Don't take it personal. Ang mga tao, 'yung personal nila eh, 'yung wrath of God eh. Second, the God's wrath is provoked. The reason why God's wrath is true is because of the presence of sin. If there is no sin, kung walang kasalanan sa mundo, walang wrath. And as I mentioned earlier, God's wrath, God's anger is His response because being a just God, a judge, He needs to punish evil doers, okay? Number three, importante ito malaman. God is law to anger. Nine times in the Old Testament, it mentions that God is law to anger. God is a loving God. He is abounding in loving kindness, slow to anger. Anong ibig sabihin ito? Kollekado ito sa number one. Ang ibig sabihin ito, si God, kung magalit, hindi nagre-act. Hindi siya... Kunyari, natapon mo 'yung... Natapon mo... Natapon ng anak mo 'yung baso, diba tayo? Nagre-act. Si God, hindi nagre-act na ganun. He is slow to anger. The idea of the slowness of God's anger, in some translations, it is translated as long suffering. Ibig sabihin ng long, mahaba. Diba sa Tagalog, ang tao niyo, mahaba 'yung PC niya. It is a settled anger. It takes a long time to boil, but it does boil at a certain point. And the idea is, matagal siya. He is very, very patient with us. And that's why in 2 Peter chapter 3 verse 9, "The Lord is not slow about His promises; but is patient toward you." He is patient towards us. Why? Because He doesn't want us to perish. Ayaw niya tayong mamatay. Ang nais niya, lahat tayo will come to repentance because God is love. He wants His creation to know Him. So He is slow to anger. He is not quick to judge because He is giving you time. If you are watching right now, kung first time niyo, o kahit din 'yung first time, and you are rebelling against God now, nagre-belde po kayo sa Panginoon, pasalamat po kayo habang mihinga po kayo. Sapagkat God is being patient towards you. If... Kung maiksipo 'yung pasensya ng Panginoon, kung nagkamali, papatay ka na eh. But God is very, very patient towards us. That is who God is. So do not associate man's anger with God's anger. 'Yun ang pangkakamali po natin. Iba po ang anger ng Panginoon. Pero balik po tayo sa atin. Ito po ang katotohanan, mag-reality check po tayo. Ang katotohanan, people do bad things. All of us do bad things. Let's acknowledge the fact that all of us, we do bad things. So, ang problema sa mundo ngayon, hindi lang people do bad things. Even Christians sometimes do bad things. The world today is getting darker and darker. What used to be good is now considered bad, okay? What used to be right, some people are now saying is wrong. I'll give you an example. This is happening in the West. You know, there in October, there was this ninth grader, okay? Her name is Lydia Booth. She was a third grader at Simpson Elementary School. And she was forced by the school authorities to remove her mask. You know why? Her face mask. Because it says, "Jesus loves me." Grabe, ano? Because according to the school authorities, it violated school policy. Can you imagine when, when did it happen that expressing your love for Jesus is a violation of school policy? Ganon pa na kayo hari sa West ngayon. It's so crazy. And the superintendent of the school, they wrote a letter to the parents, to the students, to the staff, and it is what they said, "Masks cannot display political, religious, sexual, or any inappropriate symbols, gestures, or statements that may be offensive, disruptive, or deemed destructive to the school environment." Wow, when, when did expressing your love for Jesus become a crime? Can you imagine? So the sad reality is, what used to be good, people in authorities are now saying it is bad. So kababawan naman ito si Lydia. She made a stand. She wanted to express her love for Jesus. In fact, when they interviewed her, sa news, sabi niya, she wants to become a missionary one day. Oh, bless the heart of this nine-year-old. But you know what? What the good news about Lydia is, after that... Nan news po ito, worldwide, huh? Because of what happened. After that incident, some of Lydia's classmates actually became furious about Christianity. One of her classmates wants to have a "Jesus Loves Me" mask. And then about, after hearing the situation, one of the sisters of her classmates wants to know more about Christianity. You know, I remember si Paul, si Paul again, in Philippines. You know, when he was in custody, he was in prison in Philippines. You know what he said? He was in prison, he was persecuted. Sinabi niya, "I want you to know brethren, my circumstance in prison have turned out for the greater progress of the gospel." And nakikita ko sa buhay nung batang ito, sabi niya, "In my imprisonment, my... I am not... The whole praetorian guard knows my predicament and our brethren are now bold to express the gospel because I am in prison." And I praise God for this nine-year-old because the first time, she is able to effectively share the gospel. More kids are knowing the gospel through to her. But my point is, you know, the world is becoming more and more darker. So ang tanong, ano ba ang problema? Diba? Ano ba ang problema? So siguro, may basa niyo, alam niya na, alam niya na sagot. Sabi niyo, ang problema ho, Pastor Mark, is kasalanan. Sin is the problem, and that is true, that is correct. But our text, the reason why I like our text this evening is we need to understand how it operates. We need to have a proper understanding why people do bad things. In order for us to know the problem, the solution to a problem, we need to get at the root of the problem. Why are people behaving badly? Why are people sinning? What is our root problem? Is it a lack of education? Diba? Kailangan ba? Yung mga educator, should they double up? Is it corrupt leaders? Is it bad parents, right? I mean, if those are the problems, then we need to educate all people. If it's corruption, bad leaders, then we need to elect good candidates, good leaders. If it's bad parents, we need to educate the parents. But those are only symptoms, mga simptomas lang po 'yun ang problema. Pag i... Yun ang tutukan po natin, parang lang tayo nagbond aid o nagbigay lang tayo ng Tylenol sa isang tao na may kanser. Hindi talaga 'yun 'yung problema. Ang pinakaugat ng problema ay kasalanan. Pero ang tanong, how does one, how does a person become... You know, how does he behave poorly? Why does he behave badly? At 'yun po ang pag-uusap natin sa text na 'yun. So ngayon, the way we will study the text, Romans chapter 1, verses 18 to 32, is we're going to start at the end and we will work our way up to the top, to the front. In other words, we will try to figure out the symptoms. We will look at the symptoms and try to figure out the root cause of the problem. So we will start at the end, start at verse 32, and we will work our way up. And I'm sure later, mapa-appreciate niyo ito. So tingnan natin 'yung verse 32, the end of chapter one. Sabi dito ni Paul, he writes, "Although they know the ordinance of God that those who practice such things are worthy of death, they not only do the same, but also give hearty approval to those who practice them." So this is the symptom. The symptom, why, what is our problem? Our symptom is because we celebrate evil. People celebrate evil. Look at what it says. Not only the people do bad things, but people give hearty approval. Ano siya, pero ina-approved lang. Ayaw siya, galing niya. Aalala ko po, nung ako po'y college, you know, I had this group of friends. And I mean, these are... Well, I love my friends, but of course, they did not so good things. One of my friends, who passed away a few years ago, we called him, ang tawag namin is sa kanya, si Guru. Alam niya ba 'yung Guru? Guru, teacher. Hindi dahil matalino siya, kasi magaling siya sa babae. Okay, so, in fact, dun sa barkada namin, 'yung isang babae doon, girlfriend niya. Pero, alam namin, kahit kaibigan namin 'yung girlfriend niya, alam namin na may iba pa siyang babae. In fact, nung college, nasa college kami, 'yung teacher namin sa accounting, naging girlfriend din niya. Ganun siya, kagaling sa babae, kasi he's a very good-looking guy. Very smooth talk, pero anyway, ang tawag sa kanya, si Guru. Can you imagine? We call people a womanizer, our teacher. In other words, we celebrate evil. Tapos pagtatawanan natin yun, di ba, 'yung mga tao nag-iinom, naglalaras, ina, pinag-uusapan nila, mga kalokohan, di ba? And then ayos siya, di ba? Pag marami kang babae, 'yung humikita kang malaking pera, kahit di naman maayos 'yung, 'yung pakita mo ng pera, ina-approve natin yun. For women, sometimes, you know, when somebody gets hurt by another, another lady, then he talks to his best friend. Anong advice ng best friend? Gumanti ka! Tapos pag gumanti nga 'yung isa, ang galing mo, ayan. We give hearty approval to sin, to evil. That is the reality. And that is why, that is symptom. Why do people celebrate evil? Di ba? Bakit tayo nagse-celebrate ng evil? Makikita po natin niyan sa previous verse. I'll start at the second part of verse 28. It reads, it reads this way, "To those things which are not proper, being filled with all unrighteousness, wickedness, greed, evil, full of envy, murder, strife, deceit, malice, they are gossips, slanderers, haters of God, insolent, arrogant, boasters, inventors of evil, disobedient of parents, without understanding, untrustworthy, unloving, unmerciful." So, people celebrate evil, why? Because people are evil, or people do evil. People celebrate evil because people do evil things. Now, the list is very extensive. It's a very thorough list. If you look at that list, you know, kasama ako dyan. You know, kasama tayo dyan. I mean, I don't go through all of the list. But the idea is, what Paul is saying, people do evil things. The reason why we celebrate evil is because people do evil things. That is so true. For example, you know, if, you know, Jesus said in Matthew, chapter 5, "Whoever slaps you on the right cheek, turn the other also." Pero tayo, nung ginagawa natin, if someone slaps us in the, in the right cheek, isa slap mo rin siya sa kanyang cheek, di ba? If someone takes your shirt, Jesus says, "Let him have your coat also." Tayo naman, if someone takes our shirt, nung gagawain, kukunin rin natin 'yung shirt niya. Sabi naman ni Jesus, "Whoever forces you to go one mile, go within two miles." Tayo naman, whoever forces to you, force you to go one mile, and then sabihin sayo, oh, another mile. Asuwerte mo, ano? One mile lang nga eh, sinabayang kita. Bakit pa ako sabay sayo ng two miles? You know, we do evil things. That's part of our nature. Di ba? Jesus even said, you know, if anyone, you know, you, it is said in your law, you shall not commit adultery, but I tell you the truth, if anyone, if any of you looks at another woman who is not your wife, with lust in his heart, you have committed adultery. People do evil things. In our mind, and in our heart, and even in our behavior. So why do people do evil things? Let's look at the first part of Romans, chapter 1, verse 28. It says, "Just as they did not see fit to acknowledge God any longer, God gave them over to a depraved mind." Now, the word depraved, I mean, si people na depraved, is you are unqualified. You are disqualified. You failed the test. Kasi 'yung root word nyan is tested or approved. Eh, kaso nagtest ka, hindi ka pumasah. So the reason why people do evil things, now, this is very important to understand, is this. Is because people's minds don't work. People's minds don't work. What that means is people's minds don't work the way God wants it to work. People's minds don't work the way they're supposed to work. People's minds don't work the way God created or intended it to work. People don't have the mind of Christ. They don't have the spirit of God. And therefore, 'yung utak nila, in Tagalog, hindi nagwo-work. Uh, hindi po literal to na hindi sila, na stupid to sila, tanga sila. Ang ibig sabihin nito, hindi siya, hindi sila nag-iisip according sa kagustuhan ng Panginoon. And that's very, very crucial to understand. The reason why people do evil things, because their mind is not attuned to the Lord. Let, if, if you look at, I mag-aadvance ako ng konti. If you look at Romans, chapter 12, verse 2, ito ang sinabi na ni Paul, "Do not conform to this world, but be transformed." Paano ka ba ga-transform? By the renewing of your mind. You must think differently. For transformation to happen, your mind is to change. That's why the word repentance means a change of mind. When you change the way you think, you change your behavior. So that's why people sin, people do evil, because people's minds don't work. So that you may prove what the will of God is, which is good, acceptable, and perfect. So, people's minds don't work. Now, why, why? Bakit hindi nagwo-work 'yung mga minds ng mga tao? Bakit po? Let's look at the previous verses. Let's start at verse 24. It says, "Therefore," now, this is it is, look at the highlighted words. "God gave them over in the lust of their hearts to impurity, so that their bodies would be dishonored among them, for they exchanged the truth of God for a lie, and worshiped and served a creature rather than the Creator, who is blessed forever." Okay, verse 26, "For this reason, God gave them over to the degrading passions. Their women exchanged the natural function for that which is unnatural." And in the same way, the, the, the way also the men abandoned the natural function of the women and burned in their desire toward one another. Men with men committing indecent acts, receiving in their own persons the due penalty of their error." Verse 28. "And just as they did not see fit to acknowledge God any longer, God gave them over to a depraved mind to do those things which are not proper." Now, I won't dig verse by verse, okay? It, it will take a long time. Maraming discussion sa mga verse na binasa ko. But let us just look at the main point of that section. If you notice, Paul mentioned the phrase, "God gave them over," three times, okay? God gave them over to what? To the lust of their hearts. God gave them over to the degrading, to their passions. God gave them over to a depraved mind. The word "gave them over" means to hand over, or to betray. Though that word is a same word used to describe what Jesus, sorry, what Judas did to Jesus. Judas, what did Judas do? He betrayed Jesus. So, the reason why people's minds don't work is this. Is because God has abandoned the people. That is a sad reality to accept. God has abandoned certain people. You know, the word "abandon" is, the idea of this, uh, God abandoned people, is, do you remember the, in Luke, chapter 15, the three parables that Jesus shared? The parable, alala niyo ba yun? Parable of the lost ship, parable of the lost coin, parable of the lost son, or the prodigal son, right? In the parable of the lost ship, ano ang nawala? Portion ship. Anong ginawa nung may-ari nung ship? Hinanap niya. Dun sa parable of the lost coin, nawala ang coin. Anong ginawa ng may-ari? Hinanap niya. Anong pakakaiba nung dalawang parabola sa parable of the lost son? Anong pakakaiba? What's the, what's the difference? The owner, this time, the father who owned, well, basically, he had a son. Hindi niya hinanap 'yung anak niya. That is the idea here. Because kung matigas ang ulo mo, God will tell you, okay, winabi nga na kita, inausap na kita, I warned you through my word. I already gave you, well, my warning, and if you still insist, I will hand you over to the consequences of your actions. Because God cannot force us. We are creatures with free will. And therefore, if you want to reject God, he will hand you over. This is the idea. That is the idea that Paul wants to make up. Now, why, when you abandon, when God abandons you, it affects you not only physically, but spiritually? Why? You're no longer in the presence of God. And when you're no longer in the presence of God, you don't think right. And when you don't think right, your mind don't work. You see the connection? But why did God abandon the people? We'll go to the main reason, the root cause. We look at the previous verse, starting at verse 18. It says, "For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all unguardedness and unrighteousness of men, suppressed the truth in unrighteousness, because that which is known about God is evident within them, for God made it evident to them." But the Bible is saying, "God made it evident to everyone who God is." And then, "For since the creation of the world," look at this, "His invisible attributes, His eternal power, and divine nature have been clearly seen, being understood through what has been made, so that they are without excuse. For even though they knew God, they did not honor Him as God or give thanks, but they became futile in their speculations, and their foolish heart was darkened." So people has no excuse. God has revealed themselves through creation, His divine nature. So people are without excuse. I won't discuss these details, you know. I will just look at the main points. They profess to be wise. They became fools. Exchanged the glory of the incorruptible God for an image, okay? An image in the form of corruptible man, of birds and four-footed animals and crawling creatures. So what is the main fundamental problem of men? The fundamental problem of men is this. People replace God. People replace God. So, let's work again to the last point. People celebrate evil. Why do people celebrate evil? Because people do evil things. Why do people do evil things? Because people's minds don't work. And the reason why people's minds don't work is because God has betrayed them. God has abandoned them. It's affected the way they think. They're cut off, severed off from God. The creature is separated from his, from the one who created him. And the reason why God has abandoned them is because they have replaced God. In other words, this is idolatry. The main, the root problem of men is idolatry. That is the fundamental problem of man, according to Paul. Because we have looked at God, the all-wise or powerful God, who created the world, created the universe, the righteous and just God, who loves us so much, and we said, "No, I would rather have this God." And sometimes, we think, idolatry, I, is an ancient problem. Problema yun nung panahon ng Bible. Mga juice, juice sa niya, problema yun ng maibang tao ng ibang reliyon. Problema yun ang panahon ni, ni, nung Old Testament. Hindi ko problema ito. Pero kaibigan ang katotohanan. Problema din natin ito. Because all of us have idols. We have replaced God with other things. That is the source of our problems. What are our idols today? It can be money. Now, look at the slides. How do you know if you have an idol? Is there anything that takes the place of God in your life? Ano pa? It is something that you cannot live without. You know, some kids, you know what their idol is? Their mobile phones. If they leave the house without their mobile phones, ma sisira ulo niya. If they don't get to play, to go to social media to, to play their video games, it's an idol. What else? You know, answer this question. I will be happy if I have blank, my friend. That could be your idol. What else? I ha, if I have, not my life, if this, if I have this thing, my life will be meaningful. And think about this, if I lose this thing, or this person, life will not be worth living. That's an idol. If you lose your spouse, if you lose your parents, if you lose your children, that can be an idol. It can be good things. Family, career, ministry can be an idol. Your spouse can be your idol. Your children can be an idol. Anything, anyone that you replace in your heart, as the source of your dependence, that, my friend, is your idol. So my question to you, what is your idol? Don't point your fingers at the Christians at the time, or the people in the ancient world, or people at other religions, and say, "They are idolatrous. I am not." The truth is, all of us have idols. Have you discovered what your idol is? Because the danger with idol, if you allow that idol to remain in your life, what will happen? What we have learned will happen to you. Well, your mind will not work. And hopefully, God will not abandon you. But the idea is, we need to figure out what is the idol in our lives. You know, as we close, the punishment of God. Now listen, before, as we close, I'm going to say something very important, and that you need to understand, and this connected to our future talks. The punishment of God, or the wrath of God, is reserved to those who insist, na i-insist sila, on living unrighteous lives even after the righteousness of God is revealed to them. They know God, righteousness of God is revealed, but they say, "No, God, I choose other things." That is a willful decision, okay? It is different from saying yes to God, but you still have certain idols. Okay, that's the different thing. Or what I'm saying is, these are people who say, "No, thanks." Now notice, God's wrath will be poured out, why? Because God is righteous. The justice of God demands punishment. Now listen to this, okay? Maliwanan kung kailangan ni maunawaan niyo ito. Ito po ang pakakaiba. For the non-believer, the one who rejects God, the wrath of God will fall on them. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when. It may happen during your lifetime, it may happen after your lifetime. But definitely, you will experience the wrath of God. But for the believer, if you have Jesus in your life, you have surrendered your, your life to Jesus, wrath of God fell on another person. It fell on Jesus Christ. Why? Because God loves us. He gives us a way to escape His coming wrath. And that is in the person of Jesus Christ. When He was punished, when He died on the cross for our sins, the Bible says in 1 John, 1 John, chapter 4, verse 10, "In this is love." The love of God. Not that we love God, but that He loved us. And He sent His Son to be the propitiation of our sins. The word "propitiation," you know what that means? It's a very highly technical word, but basically, what it means is to appease the wrath of an angry God. God is angry at sin. And because, but He's loved us so much, He sent His Son, Jesus, for one purpose, the first time that He came here on earth, for one purpose. So that the wrath of God will be poured on Him. He died horrible death, so that we can be rescued from the coming wrath. The cross is the only place where the justice of God, the righteousness of God, and the love of God meets. Because God's justice demanded punishment. And Jesus was punished on our behalf, so that we can be forgiven, and we can be rescued. And we will be, we will escape. Escape po tayo sa wrath ng Panginoon. So ang tanong ko po sa inyo, have you accepted Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior? Kilanggap niyo na buha po ba ang Panginoon ni Jesus bilang iyong Panginoon? At kapag ligtas dahil kung, hindi niyo gawin yun. But what is the warning? The wrath of God may be upon you. And that is the only way. That's why Jesus said, "I am the way, the truth, and the life. No one comes to the Father except to receive." Let's close in the prayer. As our heads are bowed down, as we meditate, sa ating tinagusapan, with our discussion, I would like to give you an opportunity. If you have not made that decision, to make Jesus the Lord of your life, the Savior of your life, or perhaps you, siguro, you've been living a lifestyle of rebellion. Nagre-rebelde po kayo sa Panginoon. And now the Lord has spoken to you, and you want to escape the wrath of God. You know, God has made a way for us to escape, and that is through Jesus Christ. And if that is your desire right now, to place your faith in Jesus, so that you can have a relationship with God. I'm going to lead you in the prayer. It's a very simple and very basic prayer. It's a very simple and very basic prayer, but it's a prayer of surrendering your life to Jesus as Lord and Savior of your life, so that you can be saved, you can be part of God's kingdom, so that your sins can be forgiven. So just follow along with me and say these words, "Lord Jesus, thank you very much. Maraming salamat that you gave your life for me more than two thousand years ago to pay for the penalty of my sins. I now realize that I am a sinner, and I cannot make it to heaven on my own. And therefore, I need you. Please come into my life, Lord Jesus, and forgive me of all of my sins. And please help me, please help me with your strength, with your power, to live a life that is and worthy. Thank you, Lord Jesus. In Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Maraming, maraming salamat po. God bless you. God bless.
Ah, patuloy po tayo mag-attend ng ating Merkules for us na patuloy tayo mag-grow sa ating spiritual life at spiritual union. Okay, let us pray. Otekinan Diyos kami po nagpupuri ng papasalamat. Isa na namang tagumpay ng gawaing mo Panginoon ang ah, ah, nahayag Panginoon sa gabi ito. Salamat sa mga dumalo, nakinig, at higit sa lahat, nagkaroon ng learning mula sa'yo Panginoon. Thank you so much sa mga ginamit mo, Pastor Mark, Doc June, oh Lord, na through them, oh Lord, naging channel of blessings sila, nagsalita ko Panginoon. And to the whole team na ginagamit mo ang Merkules team Panginoon, ah, ang tech, ang mga facilitators, ang mga GLC team na patuloy mong ginagamit sa gawaing ito Panginoon. Salamat sa empowerment mo sa bawal sa Panginoon. Lord, thank you so much. Sapagkat through Jesus Christ, oh Lord, He is the propitiation of our sin. Siya po ang satisfaction for us na magkaroon po kami ng salvation, oh Lord. Sabi mo nga po Panginoon, "You shall not make other gods rather than me." Sorry, Lord, kung kami po ay, hindi mang kami nag-i-ingray ng images, physically or materially, but most of the time, nakakagawa kami ng mga idols sa aming sarili. We are so much engrossed sa mga bagay-bagay na kami po ay nawawalay sa 'yung presensya Panginoon. Help us, oh Lord, na patuloy na bumalik sa 'yung presensya, at help us, oh Lord, na patuloy na makinig at sumunod sa 'yung follow-up ng Panginoon. Good night, oh Lord. Patuloy mo kami i-bless. And ang bawat isa na nandito at sa mga kasama naming din akad, may your blessings be upon us also, Lord. Lord, we thank you. We praise you in Jesus' mighty name.